Meeting to order. And the great thing about being the school board chairs, you can always have some flexibility in running the meeting. And tonight, for our pledge of allegiance, we have three wonderful young folks in our midst. We have Carter and Parker with the other children of Brittany and Jason Payne. Carter's in the 4th grade at Bethlehem Elementary and Parker's in the 2nd grade. But also, we have Ms. Noel Williams. And some of you may know her great-grandpa, Sheriff, retired Sheriff Hayden Bentley, and her paw-paw Baldi Williams. I can't even count the times that those great men helped me for years. So, we're excited to have them in our midst. And we're decided, we're excited to have these young folks coming out from those great families. And if you'll come forward. And one of these fine fellows is a two-time spelling bee champion, and he's in the 4th grade.
Attention, full, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job.
Thank you.
Well, you can certainly tell those fine young people had some good raising, and I bet they're not spoiled one bit. So, at this time, you have the agenda before you, and I'll ask for a motion regarding approval of the agenda.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we move on to honors and recognitions, the absolute best part of any school board meeting. And I'll recognize Dr. Jennifer Hefner, our superintendent.
Thank you Chairman Odom. It is my favorite part of the entire month. So, tonight, we are going to honor and recognize certified staff members who have completed National Board certification. I would ask that Board Member Brixie and Shrum, please come up and help with this. We have some first-time recipients, and then we have some renewals. First-time recipients, it's always wonderful to see, when I go into schools, the plaque that's posted outside your door saying that you have earned a wonderful honor, and you've worked awfully hard to get that. So, you will get that, as well as a name badge and a certificate tonight. North Carolina continues to lead the nation in the number of teachers who have earned certification from the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards. The certification is a rigorous, performance-based assessment that typically takes from one to three years to complete and measures what accomplished teachers and counselors should know and be able to do. Teachers in North Carolina who achieve certification receive a 12% salary supplement to their regular pay that is good for the 10-year life cycle of the certification. They are awarded eight continuing education credits as well. Tonight, we're going to honor three individuals who have obtained this certification for the very first time. I would ask that you please come up as I call your name. Please join me in congratulating Amber Huffman from ACHS. And Christina, most of you know her as I do, Chrissy Williams from Bethlehem Elementary. Another round of applause. And I'm thrilled that family members are here celebrating tonight also, because you are well aware that this is a one-to-three-year process that takes a lot of time at nights and on weekends. We are also going to honor seven individuals who have renewed their National Board certification. Please come up as I call your name. We will start with Beth Duncan, ACHS. Jeanette Boditzer, Bethlehem Elementary. Erin Lewis, Ellendale Elementary. Laura Sprinkle, Ellendale Elementary. Jenna Buff, Sugarloaf Elementary. Cindy Green, Sugarloaf Elementary. And Kim Lowman could not be here tonight, but Kim is the media coordinator at West Alexander Middle School. Give her a round of applause. Board Member Scott Bowman, will you come up and help with the next presentation? Alexander Central High School baseball coach Pete Hardy has been recognized by his peers for one of the most prestigious honors a coach can receive. Coach Hardy was inducted into the North Carolina Baseball Coaches Association Hall of Fame during the 2018 Coaches Convention held in Greensboro on Friday, December 7. Coach Hardy joined the ACHS coaching staff in 2015 and has led varsity Cougar baseball for the past three seasons. Last spring, Coach Hardy picked up his 400th career win in a Cougar victory over Western Harnett, which just happens to be coached by his son. I am most certain that was an interesting weekend. In his career, Coach Hardy has amassed a 407 to 317 high school coaching record as the head coach at West Caldwell, New Bern, Wataga, and now at Alexander Central. Before joining ACHS in 2015, Coach Hardy spent 21 seasons in Boone as the head coach of the Wataga Pioneers. Coach Hardy's teams have captured 10 conference titles and earned 17 postseason playoff positions. In addition to coaching high school baseball, Coach Hardy has served as the American Legion skipper for Caldwell County, New Bern, Wataga, and Taylorsville. He has compiled a 110 to 85 coaching record in Legion baseball. Coach Hardy was a standout baseball player at New Bern High School and Appalachian State University. He is a member of the Hall of Fame at New Bern and at ASU. He posted 21 pitching wins in the mound career at Appalachian State and posted an impressive 12-1 record in 1984. His 1.07 earned run average in 1984 was the second-best in the nation. His effort resulted in All-Conference, All-District, and All-American honors for the Mountaineer pitcher. Following his collegiate career, Hardy was a 22nd-round draft pick for the Montreal Expos in 1984. We are lucky to have you in Alexander County. I ask you to join me in congratulating Coach Pete Hardy. And I have to tell a funny real quick before Renee takes a picture. The first time I was going to email you about something, I put in Pete Hardy and nothing comes up. I type in Pete Hardy again, and nothing comes up. Nobody told me your real name is Amos.
Yeah.
I had to, I had to take this moment.
to receive the certification.
Some of us don't.
And also, I had hoped that Coach Hardy would give us one of his inspirational speeches. Yes, yes. And now, all that remain are those who have to be here or want to be here. I have heard that they are legendary, and they must work pretty good, because you win conference champions by doing that. So, but we're exceedingly thankful. So, we're glad to have you. And I have a red line agenda, and on this red line, after all the fun stuff is over, Public comment, did anybody, nobody signed up for public comments? Okay. it says, "Give the audience an opportunity to leave." How about the consent agenda? You have it before you. I could have a motion regarding consent agenda. So, you know, if you want to stay around for the business part of this meeting, you're
May I approve?
Second. Have a motion and second, any further discussion, all in favor say aye. more than welcome. Aye. Thank you. But there is a basketball game tonight at the high schools. Reports, will Bethlehem Elementary School update Ms. Charmin Frisell, principal? But we're still here. We're here.
I might turn it down just a little, or stand on my tiptoes, if you can hear me. Am I good? Okay. Chairman Odom, members of the board, Dr. Hefner, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and just update you and give you some highlights at Bethlehem, because it is a wonderful place. Our students, our families, I'm very blessed, and I appreciate the opportunity. I did bring a little cheat note here, so it's your PowerPoint. So, if I'm wrestling around, I wanted to make sure that I had everything correct on my Learning Focus highlights. So, let me just go ahead and say a disclosure there. This is my first year with Learning Focus, but I think I have it down. So, okay, okay. We are excited about Learning Focus. We do, our teachers have finished all the professional development, and it's been fun. Now, I won't say it hasn't been a lot of work, because it has, but it has been a lot of fun, too. So, we have successfully been implementing Learning Focus in all of our classrooms. And so, that's a picture of one of the professional development days led by Michelle Motley, our instructional coach. So, we're excited about that. Learning Focus process, there's three different steps to it. And so, first, the teachers plan the lesson curriculum, and with that curriculum, they're digging in those standards all the time. They know those standards, they're looking through the standards, they're looking at which standards to implement at what time. And so, first off, they select their standards, and then they plan the lesson assessment, they develop the assignment, and they determine how the students are going to learn. And then, the last part of the Learning Focus process is planning the lesson instruction. And so, they create things like graphic organizers, they determine assessment prompts and their activities, and they have activating strategies. So, I'll show you a lesson plan and what it entails, because I'm pretty confident that we're the only place implementing Learning Focus lesson plans.
To fidelity.
To fidelity. And if the teachers would have been here at first, they were like, "What are we doing?" But now, they're like, "Oh, I'm so glad we're doing this." So, I made them leave, just in case they didn't say that. So, the first thing they do when they're planning their lessons is select the standards. And that EQ up there stands for essential question, because that's what they're asking the children. If you walk in any of the classrooms, you'll see an essential question, and it's all marked up, like this one is in pink, with terms that the students understand. And so, they dissect it and take it apart, and the students understand the language that's being used and what, it's friendly terms for them and what's expected. When they're planning the lesson assessment, I'm especially proud of this PowerPoint, this slide on the PowerPoint, because teachers this summer viewed online classroom learning environment, professional development, and they had time to either do that during the summer when they had, because they want to work all summer long, they really do. They didn't have to, but they wanted to, or they could have done it on the required workdays that we had. And so, as they were doing the online assessment or assignments that they had, this picture is an example of how a teacher, and she did lots of things in that picture. She has the essential questions, she has the rubrics, and she has the assignments. And so, there are different stages in Learning Focus, and this one's quality. And so, that's the highest on the list. So, this grade level did that, and that exemplifies quality, because it has all of the components listed. So, I'm especially proud of that one. So, as I go over, and I take pictures all the time, because I turn in pictures in our bulletin that we turn in each week, and I just like to take pictures, because they do such great work. And so, if parents come in to see me, I can show them their pictures. We have some Valentine's work now in one of our classrooms. And the little Valentines in the cross-categorical class, they're doing something with hearts, and it looks like the students are blowing kisses, along with their writing. So, I plan to put a picture of that in our bulletin this week, because it's great, too. So, before click, because I know I got to talk fast, because I got a lot to tell. The teachers then plan the instruction. This is a graphic, I'm sorry, this is an activating strategy, and they plan their activating strategies last, but they present it first. The example is called Carousel Brainstorming. I had to cheat on that one, because I couldn't remember. I wouldn't remember it, but I did look. It's Carousel Brainstorming, and what they do in the classrooms, you'll see sticky notes all over the classrooms, and it's a process. And eventually, the sticky notes wind up back on the graphic organizer, and this one is an activating strategy. But it helps the students stay more engaged with the assignment and to be involved in all of the learning, and it's just active learning at all times. The next slide, this is a Learning Focus lesson plan, and I'm, back in the day when you did six-point lesson plans and you turned in lesson plans, and that's not the way we do it now. This is one lesson, and it's three pages. So, that's probably why we are the only school doing these lesson plans, but they really appreciate, I mean, they, the work is excellent, and the standards, they know them, they're diving into it, they're excited, they want to share them all the time. And so, if you'll notice, Dr. Chlor too, in our PDPs, the lesson plans are attached there, because that's an artifact for them. But this is one lesson. This one happens to be language arts. Our 3rd and our 5th grade teachers decided to do science, but then everybody else is doing language arts. So, this looks like three different things, but that's actually one language arts lesson plan. So, and then...
I have a question, because I...
Don't ask me a lot of questions, then, because I just have notes on what...
I didn't bring my readers in here. But this is one lesson plan, but how many days does that typically span?
It's usually, I started to say three to four, I was going to say a week, but it is three to four days. So, it's not like they go in there and have to do this every day. And you do have interruptions, which we have picture day, or we'll have a Valentine snack, or, so it takes three to four days.
I just wanted board members to understand that they're not producing this for every lesson taught every day.
Right.
That this spans three to four days.
And this year, when we were talking, because I don't want y'all to think, "Oh, my word, that lady expects..." When we were talking this year about our PDPs, we decided a goal that we wanted to work on, and the goal by the end of the year was to produce one, just one, because it is a lot of work, and it has taken them, a lot of professional learning community meetings in their POCs is what we call it. It's a lot of work. So, the goal by the end of the year was to have one. Well, some people already had several, and so, once they did one, they wanted to do another one, but the requirement was for one. And so, we're raising that rigor and making it quality, and, but the requirement was for one. So, I don't think I'm just like cracking the whip that hard, because I don't mean it that way. So, I'm glad you clarified that. And then, this is something that I wanted to show you, because it does drive our data. I could have showed you our iReady and our M-class and the triangles that we have on the wall and how we're moving those students. But the thing I'm most proud of, they take what they're learning, and they actually use everything that they have from the lessons that they, the Learning Focus lessons, and they look at what standards, what they need to do, what was this question, what standard was that, have I taught that yet, why do you think we scored that on that? And so, it does involve the students, too, and they're taking ownership of their learning. So, this was a picture in a classroom of the percentage and what was going on with the data and the assessment. And so, here are some just pictures that I've taken, I wanted to share with you, and they're kind of like squeezed in there and put in there, but there's all kind of vocabulary focus and learning activities and experiences for students as the teachers are creating those, and they're intentionally designed, the activities are intentionally designed to help the students to meet all the goals and to answer that essential question, so it will help them with their learning. Okay, that's the last one. And so, I said, "If you have some questions, I'll be glad to answer, but I do want to make sure you know, this is my first year with it, too, and so, I have been reading the books, but if I get stumped, I might look, I'm going to have to phone a friend, but I'll try. So, I will try. But I am excited for the opportunity to be there. I could have came in and shared, too, that we have the two-time spelling bee winner, and we have the hoop-shoot winner, and there's just lots of stuff going on all the time. They're all winners there. And so, that's all I had to share and update everybody, but if you do have any questions, I know Dr. Curry will answer when I phone a friend. And I'm hoping I pass the test. Okay, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Wonderful presentation. I think we'll, if this is taped and recorded via video, then maybe we will share your presentation with the other administrators and say, "Hey."
Oh, no.
Ten minutes, she did great.
Oh, yeah, even though...
You did wonderful. Won me over, for sure. Okay, now, this is not a misprint in the agenda, but this time, I'll recognize Dr. Betsy Curry for the iReady Diagnostic Testing Presentation. Just wanted to qualify that, because I am ready, but this says, "I ready."
It is, "I ready."
Yes.
What Charmin doesn't understand is that Michelle Motley probably knows far more than I do about Learning Focus lesson plans, and you're going to be leading professional development down next year. They do always a great job of implementing everything with fidelity at Bethlehem Elementary School. And like she said, we are not requiring that complete lesson plan, and when we do require it, it is for one content area, and it's a content area that we're really struggling in, which is for ELA. And that lesson plan is more like a unit plan. So, it is not something they read every day for every content area. So, I'm so glad that you drew our attention to that. And you did a great job, Charmin, thank you. And just for the record, Sharon Mahaffey said I could have two of her minutes. That's a little complicated.
Is that legal?
No, it's not.
Okay, I'll go quickly. What I want to talk to you about today is iReady.
Yeah.
Because I'm ready. Universal screening tool and benchmarking system. But I think this is also a great opportunity to talk to you a little bit about testing in Alexander County, because we use iReady as a universal screener. And so, what I have done is, we've had several questions, and I think maybe Bridgette and I have had some conversation about the amount of testing that goes on, we've had some parent conversations in Alexander County schools. So, I have linked this information for you, in case you get questions. You may want to put it right next to your phone. But this is the test, these are the tests that we do in Alexander County. Anything in blue is a state or a federal requirement, so we have no choice. What is in yellow is what we choose to do, okay? So, if you look down here, you will see every test for every grade level, to the best of my ability. The only things in Alexander County that we do that is not required by the states are these things in yellow. And so, the reason we do these is because the results that we get from the state of North Carolina do not come until after the children have already left us. So, we need to have some measure of how they're doing, so that we can help them throughout the school year to progress. So, that is one document. Oh, this is going to be really hard. Yes, if you'll click back to the presentation, please. And this is a little more of a description about all of the tests that we take, and this is, again, just for your information. It will tell you what the tests are, but it will also tell you what they use them for and why they're required. Again, these are all the state and federally required tests, and you get down here, and this is what's required by Alexander County schools, okay? This gives you...
There's a lot of misconceptions right now out in the public. Our state superintendent talks about reducing testing, and, you know, that's great, but we really just want people, especially our community, to understand what is being tested and who's requiring it, the state, the federal government, or, you know, us locally. And we do very few that are locally driven.
So, this is ESSA, and I'll be talking a little bit about that. That's the Every Student Succeeds Act, and that's a federal requirement or a federal act, kind of like No Child Lucky Kind was. So, a lot of what the state of North Carolina does, they have submitted to be in compliance with ESSA. So, you'll hear me talking about that a little bit as we go on. Will you go back to the presentation for me? Thank you. So, I just wanted you to have that for your reference, because I'm sure you hear all the time that we test too much. And I agree, we test too much, but it's a federal or a state requirement. So, one of the things that we have some options on are what type of universal screening tool we will use. And that's how we identify kids who are at risk in that tier process of MTSS. Do you remember, we've talked about before, the tier-one kids or the core kids that are solid, and then we have tier-two needing a little bit of support and tier-three needing intensive support? So, we're required for the MTSS process to have a universal screener. We have tried different things. We most recently tried EasyCBM, and we really did a lot of research with our psychologists and our coaches and our principals, and came up with iReady as probably the best option for us. So, we just implemented that this year, and I'm going to show you a little bit of what the data looks like. So, when we get a report for iReady, and again, this is our choice, but we have to do a universal screener, so it's really not a choice, okay? But we like this, so it's okay. When you...
Our state superintendent talks about reducing testing and you, you know, that's great. But we really just want people, especially our community, to understand what is being tested and who's requiring it, the state, the federal government, the, or you know, us locally. And we do very few that are locally driven.
So this is ESSA and I'll be talking a little bit about that. That's the Every Student Succeeds Act. And that's a federal requirement or a federal act, kind of like No Child Lucky Kind was. So a lot of what the state of North Carolina does, they have submitted to be in compliance with ESSA. So you'll hear me talking about that a little bit as we go on. Will you go back to the presentation for me? Thank you. So I just wanted you to have that for your reference because I'm sure you hear all the time that we test too much. And I agree, we test too much, but it's a federal or a state requirement. So one of the things that we have some options on are what type of universal screening tool we will use. And that's how we identify kids who are at risk in that tier process of MTSS. Do you remember we've talked about before the tier one kids or the core kids that are solid? And then we have tier two needing a little bit of support and tier three needing intensive support. So we're required for the MTSS process to have a universal screener. We have tried different things. We most recently tried Easy CBM and we really did a lot of research with our psychologists and our coaches and our principals. And came up with iReady is probably the best option for us. So we just implemented that this year. I'm gonna show you a little bit of what the data looks like. So when we get a report for iReady, and again, this is our choice, but we have to do a universal screener. So it's really not a choice. Okay? But we like this, so it's okay. When you click on and log into iReady, we like this because it helps kids and, and we can tell what kids need. You have an option to look at diagnostic results or diagnostic growth. But what I want you to notice about this, this is what we're looking at today, the growth and the results. But they also will group students and they will tell us who's completed the diagnostics and has completed during a certain window. So they will instructionally group the students and they will provide interventions right at the fingertips of the, of the teacher so they can print these things out or put them on online instruction during that intervention group time. That's really targeted to their specific needs.
Quick question. Do you mean grouping them within a classroom or within a bigger unit?
It depends. Now, sometimes like at some of our schools, they might have like a fifth grade intervention time. And so if, if eight kids across four different fifth grades need the same skill set and they have an interventionist, the interventionist will pull those kids out for that thirty minutes. But that's on top of core instruction. Most of our schools do ninety minutes of core reading instruction and then they have another thirty minutes, what we call now, where we're transitioning to be acceleration for all. So it doesn't matter where you are in the standards. You're either being accelerated in the standards or you're receiving interventions to help fill those holes. But it's very, very diagnostic, which is why teachers are really buying into this tool. Okay? So this is what it looks like for reading for the district. I'm gonna have to put on my glasses for this one work for my paper. But you know, when we've talked about tiers, we talked about that triangle and the red is students at risk. Yellow is students on tier two, red is extremely at risk, and green is good. So you can see that very faded triangle to the right. Those are our kids at the beginning of the year that were in green, yellow and red. So at mid-year, what we had was we had twenty, thirty-nine percent of our kids move into, were in green and now we have forty-eight percent. So forty-eight percent of our kids, even at this point in the year, are on target to be on grade level. So I think that's pretty good data. Off on the side, it says placement by domain. You can look at this particular, our district, we're a hundred percent green in phonics. Or that's phonemic awareness, I think that first one. Yes, phonemic awareness. And you can see as we move up through the pieces of reading, we become less and less proficient because it becomes more and more complicated. But knowing that a phonemic awareness is pretty solid, we can go in and look at individual kids and where their breakdown is and it's very prescriptive for them. Oh, the other thing is, let's see. Okay, here is math. Same type of thing. Look at that green in math from fall to mid-year. And to me, that's very, very telling. But you can also look at domains and you can go in and look at individual grade levels like we look today. And third grade was really low in measurement and geometry, but they haven't gotten to that in their curriculum yet. So we're not going to intervene on that because we haven't even covered it yet. We're gonna go back and intervene on those first two standards, numbers and operations. But you can very easily see how that red is shrinking and that green is getting bigger. And that's what we want to see because that means we're growing children. So those are called diagnostic results. That is our proficiency. We've always been more concerned about growth. So you have this report for the, for the district. This is reading. This is the mid-year report. We want to be at fifty percent in reading and that means we have, um, made progress through about fifty percent of the curriculum.
Dr. Curry, will you clarify, when you say for the district, will you clarify for the board, the grade levels that have taken this?
K eight, K eight. For reading, it's not K three, I'm sorry. It's, it's three eight for reading because we have M-class. For math, it's K eight. So in, as a district, we are at sixty-two and we want to be at fifty. So we're doing very, very well in reading as far as growth. We still struggle with some proficiency in reading. If you look at the typical growth, those bar graphs, on the very right, that's the number of students that have met where they're supposed to be at this point. On the far left is the percentage that have not met. So we've still got some work to do. We can click on names and stuff and find out who these kids are, who these teachers are that are struggling and really start targeting some support. The stretch growth is what a student will need to make in order to close the gap in three years. So if we have a child that is at fifty percent of their stretch growth at mid-year, we know that in three years, they're going to meet growth expectations if all things continue the same. So when we're talking about referral for the EC program, we're saying, no, that child's on target. They're closing that gap because we're providing good quality instruction for them. This is diagnostic district growth in math. We are at fifty-eight percent of the way through. And of course, that was at mid-year, so we're pretty strong here. You can also look at the tiers on the bottom right and you can look at stretch growth versus typical growth. But it keeps getting more and more detailed. This is an individual school's growth. So if you look at this school, and I can't remember if this was reading or math, but it really doesn't matter. Whatever curriculum area this was, they were at seventy-five percent of their content covered in mid-year. And we have schools that are up to eighty-eight and ninety percent. We have kids that are up over three hundred percent of their growth for the year. So it's pretty exciting to see. So that's what it looks like for an individual school and it also tells their tier. I've left the names off the schools on purpose. This is individual teachers within a school. And I know that this is kind of wordy, but you have copies of this and I'm gonna provide to you out here. But what you can see is that typical growth is in the far left column. There's a column header there. And you can see that, actually, I think this is, yeah, this is teachers. You can see that one teacher there, her kids have made a hundred twenty-five percent of the expected growth for this year. That's pretty phenomenal. So what does that do for us? It gets us to go in there and say, what is this teacher doing that we need to be replicating? Then you see one that's at two hundred ninety-six and one that's at zero. So the opposite is true. You're not making growth with your kids and what's happened? This is an individual classroom report. So you can drill down to the individual classroom and you look at this teacher's classroom. You see that first child has made two hundred forty-four percent of their growth. And that child is in grade four, came in on a grade four level and is now on an early grade five. But that child made a hundred and thirty percent of their stretch growth, which means they will probably close that gap and be on grade level at the end of the year. This also helps us with teachers because we can sort by red, yellow and green. With red being those kids that are most at risk, yellow being at risk, green being real high flyers. And then we can see if there's any kind of pattern, like this teacher is really meeting the needs of her low babies, but really struggling with those upper ones. So how can we intervene? Send in the AIG teacher, send in the coach to really help them to work with those upper level kids. So it becomes very diagnostic. Then when we look at children, an individual child, this is a reading snapshot. And if you look at this child, they tested out of phonological awareness and the first diagnostic, they were at, overall, they were in grade four. Mid-year, they were mid-five. Phonological awareness, they're fine and they're green both times. Same with phonics, same with high frequency words. Vocabulary is phenomenal. They've gone from grade four to late five. And that's probably why you've seen comprehension go up in both areas also. But look at that comprehension for informational text. And this is in a half a year. So it's pretty, it's pretty good data to have. So if people ask you about iReady, iReady is this diagnostic that we're doing benchmark wise. This gives us good information to group children, but we also do what is called the Ready Benchmark or the Release Version of the EOG. And that's just a benchmark test that we do two times a year, once very early in the year and once again in March in order to help kids build stamina. Some kids have, or some schools have opted to do it three times a year like we used to, but that was optional. And they decided as a staff that it was important for them. How did I do on time, Sharon?
Wonderful presentation. Ms. Mahaffey has one minute and fourteen seconds.
Do you all have any questions? If you do, feel free to call me and, and ask me individually about this. But I have the reports printed out for you back here so that.
It's really interesting.
It is really interesting and I've tried to cram it all in ten minutes.
You did well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Jennifer Heffner, our superintendent, you have two minutes and twelve seconds.
I will read very quickly about the award of honor. The Alexander County Board of Education has established the award of honor in order to recognize those individuals who have made exceptional contributions to Alexander County schools. This award represents the highest honor that the Board of Education can bestow. Criteria for the selection of this award shall be based on exceptional contributions to the Alexander County school system or any of its individual schools in the area of academics, athletics, administration, student achievement, or community service to the schools. The contributions may include recognition on a regional, statewide or national level as well as local notoriety and shall have allowed our children the chance not only to grow and meet their full potential, but to excel as well. The final yardstick by which all nominees shall be judged as to the merit of his or her application is the positive effect on the quality of education in Alexander County as recognized by fellow students, teachers, administrators, and the community in general. Guidelines for this award. A committee shall be established to receive and screen recommendations for this award. Neither current Board of Education members nor current school system employees are eligible for the award. The final decision shall be made by the Alexander County Board of Education. Nominations may be made from the second week in February through the second week in March of each year. Nominations will be kept on file for up to three years. Each individual nominated must have a minimum of three letters of recommendation by non-immediate family members. The award shall be given annually at the time determined by the Board of Education. Nomination forms are available at the Alexander County Board of Education office. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the board?
And can I just put in a plug? Please get us some nominations. It's a great thing that the board very much enjoys.
Thank you, Dr. Heffner. And who would move forward with the facility contract between Alexander County Schools and Cross Point Church, please?
Thank you, Chairman Odom. I am working from policy number fifty thirty, which states the superintendent is authorized to enter into agreements with community groups for the lease of school property for terms of one year or less. All such leases must be reviewed and approved in advance by the board attorney. The superintendent shall inform the board of the execution of any lease at its next regularly scheduled meeting. Leases may be renewed following the same process. And I have attached the lease agreement with Cross Point Church. It is for a term of twelve months and you see the dates. You see, um, the total that will be charged to the church each month. The area that it involves at the old Head Start property. I will share with you, Chairman Odom, that I did share this contract with our attorney, Joel Harbison. And he has given me the thumbs up with his approval.
All right. Any questions from the board regarding this contract?
Well, I have a few questions.
Okay.
Uh, what are we, is there a long-term plan for the property? Have we started having discussion on that? And, and since I'm new on the board, I don't know who that falls under, so I apologize.
It would fall under the facilities committee. We have not had any long-term discussions. But I can say that we have a board policy that will govern how that works. Any contract that would be considered long-term would span from one, more than one year up to a maximum of ten years. And we would actually have to determine a fair market value with a lease and with the, I guess, the asking price if the facilities committee decides to put the property up for sale. So I would suggest that sometime in the next twelve months during this short-term lease, that we start having some of those discussions.
And the other issue that I had was the, are we certain that the rent is going to outweigh the cost of the utilities and the using the building?
I can't say that we're certain, but I can tell you that Sharon Mahaffey and I will be reviewing the utility bills monthly. And if, if we are not exceeding what that totals, then I will come back and, and rework some things.
So is, does it have written in the contract that we're supposed to review or is it just something internally we're doing?
It's something that I have discussed with Chris Mead, the pastor. Other questions?
It's, I feel comfortable that we're offsetting our costs. And, and you know, it, it, as a person that's in the rental business, if this was private, you know, that would be a, a tough thing to look at, that you're just offsetting your cost. But we don't have those extra options when we're a school system. And, and so I, I feel comfortable that we're at least offsetting cost.
One, one comment that I would add is that, you know, that building is severely underutilized and yet we were still paying to heat it to keep the pipes from freezing. You know, some exorbitant annual cost for a building that was maybe used, what, three times, three days? And that was the pod.
The, the pod was actually only used about two days a year.
Okay. And, and additionally, um, this agreement is significantly larger than the amount that we have ever received for rent at the Old Whittenburg or the Quanza Hut, which has been zero for many, many, many years. So if we're gonna sustain underutilized property, at least we can have some positive revenue coming in versus just paying to heat and sustain an underutilized building. So it's a, it's a short-term lease and, and we'll certainly engage the facilities committee going forward about developing some long, long-range plans for, for underutilized properties.
Chairman Odom, if I may, in addition, the, the Cross Point Church has been very good stewards and gatekeepers of the property that they have leased before. And so when, even though I'm an attorney and I believe everything has to be committed to writing, I, I have no doubt that the church and, and Pastor Mead will be good stewards of the utilities. And you know, they are responsible for the cabling and the internet and some repairs and things like that. So I'm, I'm very comfortable with the contract.
Any other comments from the board? And one great thing, social media always decries, we need more churches and schools, so here you go.
You worked hard on that, didn't you?
Do you need a motion or just?
No, the way, the way that the policy reads, I just have to inform you all that the board attorney has approved the contract.
Okay, thank you. Just lead off with your superintendent's report.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And this is also attached in your agenda. I would ask that you mark your calendar for Friday, February twenty-second. We are going to visit and tour Ellendale Elementary that day. We will meet in the school's office at eleven-thirty and I have provided this information to Mrs. Hope. If there is something in particular that you would like to see when we visit one of our schools, if you'll let me know, the administrator will make that happen during our visits. I also want to remind everyone that we have a meeting with Representative Jeffrey Elmore on February twenty-eighth. We are going to meet with him in this room at six. We will advertise that and that will be a public meeting. Bullet number three, our school system was approved to start a fire academy at Alexander Central High School during a meeting that was held on January thirtieth. The, the first course offered for the program beginning in August will be public safety. I will know the interest of our students and will report back to you after students have registered for their fall classes. That will likely be at the April meeting. Future academics with this program could include emergency medical technician, law and justice, and emergency management. And so I'm excited about those opportunities and certainly hope that they come to fruition. The following, uh, North Carolina School Board Association webinars have been purchased for the school system on the following dates. On April twenty-third, Guns in Schools, a review of law and policy. And on May fourteenth, School Violence Prevention, Establishing an Effective Student Threat Assessment Process. Anytime that we have a webinar that we've purchased and that's at a minimal, a minimal cost to the system, it's a hundred fifty dollars. And as many employees or board members can watch it on the day that it's scheduled, as long as you watch it from seven AM to nine PM. We actually have had one today entitled Visitor Access to School Facilities and Use of School Facilities by Outsiders. And while a couple of administrators had difficulty logging on, I've gotten some feedback today that once they were logged on to the webinar, it's very informative and we probably need to go back and, and question some things in our facility use policy. So Renee, I'm certain that makes you happy since we approved some things in the consent agenda. But it always is, is teaching us and educating us. but it always is, is teaching us and educating us, and that's a good thing. I also wanted to mention that Vice Chairman Ryan and I attended the ACHS Athletic Boosters Meeting last night. You will be very pleased with that group's progress. Also, a booster and PTO financial training has been scheduled for Tuesday, February twenty-sixth, beginning at six in this room. We have every school represented and Mike White, our system, school system auditor, will be facilitating that training. And that is to teach good record-keeping processes and requirements as far as folks dealing with money in the school system. And then I want to mention that Career and Technical Education Month, or CTE Month, is a public awareness campaign that takes place each February to celebrate the value of CTE and the achievements and accomplishments of CTE programs across the country. In Alexander County, we have twenty-three CTE teachers, nineteen at the high school, and two at each middle school. We serve over one thousand students each semester, and that's of course a duplicated count. We offer courses in five different program areas, being agriculture, business and marketing, family and consumer sciences, health sciences, and trade and industrial education. Our student organizations from those CTE classes are FFA, Skills USA, DECA, and the National Technical Honor Society. In these organizations, we have students that compete at the local, regional, and state and national levels sometimes. And I would just ask you to join me in celebrating our CTE director, our CTE teachers, students, and the program. We do have a strong program at our high school. So thank you Susan Gaya, and I think she has left a little goodie bag up here for each of you. But we celebrate CTE in Alexander County. Do you have any questions?
Actually, I do.
Okay.
The CTE, as you just talked about it, I'm kinda curious with the academy. Has there already been against the public safety class? Is that falling under CTE?
Yes, it does.
And does that mean we're hiring and increasing their budget? Or is it gonna pool resources?
In the, in the meeting with Russell Green, he was part of that meeting. And he assured us that the commissioners are supportive of providing funding for an instructor. What we have to determine now, Board Member Cooksey, is we have to determine how much of an instructor we need. And that will be based on student registrations for that public safety class.
Because I, I love the CTE program.
Yes.
I'd hate to see us water down something going well because we're having to add something. Because I'm excited about, I don't wanna mislead what I'm saying. I'm very excited about the public safety track, but it's, needs to be funded.
And Mrs. Gaya was very forthcoming in the fact that she has lost CTE funding. And, and that has happened because of declining enrollment and a variety of things. And she was very open about not having extra CTE funding to cover an instructor. So this was, and correct me if I'm wrong, it was agreed upon that this funding would have to be in addition to what she is currently getting through state and federal dollars.
And is it, also, is it correct that also emergency medical, I mean, emergency services will also be providing some equipment? That was my understanding.
It's my understanding that the equipment will be provided from the different fire departments. And when the Sugarloaf Fire Department is vacated, that would be an ideal place to store the equipment and to use it for some of that training. But the, the class, the first class that will be taught in the fall will be taught at the high school campus, the public safety course.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, I appreciate the questions.
We have some more unfinished business and we'll recognize Ms. Mahaffey, our CFO, for opposed policy revision, third reading.
We have one policy that we're bringing back for third reading this month because there were some, some changes last month. And so I have received no comment, and I ask that you approve it on third reading.
Motion regarding the policy?
Move to approve.
Second, any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, Ms. Mahaffey?
We have eight policies that we're bringing back this month for second reading. And I've had no comment or requests for changes, so I ask that you approve those on second reading.
I do have just one quick question slash comment. Forty-three sixteen student dress code. So back in the day, I don't know how many years ago it was, when we took all that time to develop a very detailed and specific dress code. That dress code can remain in a place, remain in place. It just takes it out of a policy and makes it more of an administrative, school-based decision.
Well, actually, it will, there will be a procedure that, and it will be, when you look at the, the board policies, it will be a procedure. It will be forty-three sixteen R.
Okay.
And that will be the detail that, that goes with that.
I sure make sure that if anybody ever happened to look at our policies, I don't think he does, but that it was clear that it's not going away.
We have, we, actually, we, we have met once with a committee of six people, two from each elementary, middle, and high school, and we're, we're, we're reviewing those.
Just the, the R portion of that policy, gotcha.
The R portion.
Thank you very much. I would move to approve on the second reading the eight policies as presented.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. New business, item five, Ms. Mahaffey.
We have five policies that we're bringing for first, first reading this month. We'll request that the principals and directors review those and we'll bring them back this month with a recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Mahaffey.
Thank you.
Dr. Hebner, a resolution supporting local control of school calendars.
Thank you Chairman Odom. Before I begin with the resolution, I just want to inform the board that we have received confirmation that a bill has been entered for calendar flexibility for Catawba County Schools, Hickory City Schools, and Newton Conover City Schools. And the rationale was because they partner with CBCC. And those systems wanted to have a, a calendar similar to the community college calendar. So in light of the fact that we too partner with CBCC, I would ask that you take the following resolution into consideration. This is a resolution supporting local control of school calendars. Whereas the North Carolina General Statute gives local boards of education powers of supervision and control of local school systems. And whereas local control over establishing school calendars is an integral component of school system supervision and administrative powers with which local boards of education have been vested. And whereas in two thousand and four, the North Carolina General Assembly seized control of setting school calendars and imposed a one-size-fits-all mandate on how school calendars are to be set. And whereas the current one-size-fits-all school calendar start date is no earlier than the Monday closest to August twenty-sixth, and the end date is no later than the Friday closest to June eleventh. And whereas the state mandated late-August start date means high schools do not complete the first semester until mid to late January. And whereas the current law essentially requires high school students to take, take first semester exams after the winter break, which negatively impacts test scores according to students and educators. And whereas the second semester for high school starts two to three weeks later than community colleges and universities. And whereas superintendents report that the calendar misalignment makes it nearly impossible for high school students or recent winter graduates to take courses at a nearby community college or university during the second semester. And whereas exams for advanced placement and international baccalaureate classes are given on the same day nationwide, and the current calendar law shortens the amount of time North Carolina's students have to learn the material before test day. And whereas it is well documented through multiple studies that children will experience a phenomenon known as summer learning loss, which has a disproportionate impact on low-income children. And whereas with little flexibility built into the school, into the calendar, scheduling makeup days is extremely challenging. And whereas fall sports and band begin August first, schedules for extracurricular activities have not changed to coincide with the state mandated school calendar. And whereas local boards of education are best equipped to understand the balancing act of meeting the community's needs and maximizing student success. And whereas restoring local control of school calendars will allow local boards of education to best meet the calendar preferences of the families, educators, and businesses in our community while allowing for innovative, experimental approaches to improve student achievement. Therefore, be it resolved that the Alexander County Board of Education requests that the Alexander County Board of, County Commissioners pass a resolution in support of calendar flexibility, adopted by the Alexander County Board of Education this twelfth day of February two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you, Dr. Hebner. You have the resolution before you, what it's a pleasure of the board?
Move to approve.
Motion, is there a second?
Adopt, I guess adopt.
Adopt.
Sorry, move to adopt.
Okay, there is a second. Any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Resolution carries. This time we'll recognize Ms. Jessica Anderson, Director of Accountability for the proposed two thousand and nineteen, twenty calendar.
So this is the proposal for the calendar unchanged. The draft should be in your packet. Are there any questions regarding the calendar?
None, that looked good. Because you can only do so much.
And you've hit the crux of the matter. So I just seek approval.
I'll, I'll have to say this. By not having calendar flexibility, the high school wanted two days at the end of the first semester to turn over and transition to a new semester. And we just could not get it worked out with the other things that the group and, and a group did decide on this calendar. It, we just couldn't make it fit. With a start date and a mandated end date, it's, it's just about impossible. So the high school will have to turn around their semester in one day.
One and a half technically.
That's right, that Friday before, they would have some time.
But that's unfortunately what they've been allotted for, for numerous years in the past. I mean, it is very difficult for the high schools to do that.
Once again, I'll ask the newbie question, but with the resolution we passed, if they do do some action at the state level, is it possible to change the calendar? Or are we setting it now and this is it for next year?
This calendar would be set. It would be good for the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one calendar.
So we're looking at one year away for flexibility?
Yes.
Thank you, all right, board. You have the proposed nineteen twenty school calendar before you. There's little we can do about it, so how about a motion to adopt?
Motion to approve.
Motion by?
Second.
Okay, in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have the calendar for two thousand and nineteen, twenty. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Okay, I'll recognize Dr. Hebner for our strategic plan, two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty-two.
Well, I think this is the last time I'm going to bore you with this agenda, but I've talked a lot tonight, but I'm really excited to talk to you about this. This is the new strategic plan, and, and actually, it's the first time it's being unveiled. But I certainly hope to get to share this with our Board of County Commissioners and others. It has taken months of work. And the great thing is, is that we didn't start at ground zero. We already had a very good strategic plan in place that we had used for three years. But we have revamped this, and I have to give kudos to Renee Need. Renee is very gifted with pulling things together and to make them look beautiful. And you know that my rule with the previous strategic plan is that it has to tell the story of the Alexander County school system. And we have tried to do that once again. The format looks a little different. But I told Renee, when we were picking covers for this strategic plan, that I want to be this girl when I grow up. She is just breathtakingly beautiful. And we have a system full of, of beautiful and neat students. And, and I come to work every day in hopes that I will make their future better. But let's go through this quickly. I'm not going to read it to you. You have an electronic copy that I shared with you last week. I would just go through and, and point out a couple of highlights as far as the different look. You can see that the title of this strategic plan is Every Child's Chance, Alexander County's Future. And I truly believe that this public school system is just that. We also share our vision that the Alexander County schools will graduate highly skilled, globally competitive students. And our mission is, the Alexander County schools' mission is to educate and empower every student to become a responsible and productive citizen. And the motto that I love to use, and it's not just words on paper, I love putting children first. And we have a system full of leaders who do that. I'm not going to read the belief statements, but I would just invite you to look at some of the statistics. Now, I want you to understand that the data that you see in this strategic plan is not two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen data. So when you see something and you say, well, I, I thought such and such, certainly ask a question about that, but we had had a little confusion, even on my part, about some of the things that we were reporting, such as the number of breakfasts that we were serving every day. That's based on the seventeen, eighteen school year data. But I want you to go through and look at that. Something that we joked about as we worked, there is a difference in a goal, a strategy, and an action step. So in this strategic plan, you are going to see seven priority areas. And that is different for us because we are coming out of a plan where we had six. This one, we added a seventh priority. And the reason being is because we are seeing a lot of emotional trauma, families in crisis, mental health conditions, safety conversations and concerns. I mean, it's something that we're dealing with on a daily basis. So this, there is one new priority area entitled emotional wellness. So everything else stayed the same with the exception, we renamed transformational technology to read educational technology. But when you go through this beautiful document, you're going to see that it will give you the priority area and the overall goal for that priority. Then it varies with the number of strategies that might be involved in that priority. And under the strategies, those are action steps that we will take to ensure that we meet these goals within a three-year period. So I just point that out to you. Again, it's a lot of information to digest. I don't even know that, that you've had, had time to do much more than read through it, but I would ask for any questions. Do you have any questions at this time?
Not at this time.
It's a well-prepared document. One thing I did find is we're not in there, so.
The Board of Education is not?
There are pictures of this.
There are assorted pictures. Okay, no?
History, history will not remember us.
Well, one thing, now you're gonna think I'm making this up, but I promise I'm not. We divided folks into the seven priority areas. We worked on this to make revisions, new strategies, action steps, and everything. And the one page that we have not included yet, we are going to list the seven priorities and the folks who worked with us because we had community members, we had board members, we had a variety of teachers who helped us with this, instructional coaches, just a, a lot of people that we will be including on the very last page of the plan. So, and Karen is showing me that you really are right there. Was that the community partner celebration?
Collaborative community.
Renee, could we squeeze a group picture in? This is a fine group. Oh, really? Okay, look, you get a whole page. Okay, look, you get a whole page.
Great. It's a great document.
It is. It is very, very, very beautiful to look at.
It's, it's one that I'm really proud of, and, and Renee did a wonderful job. Jessica served as her proofreader, so Jessica can recite part of the new strategic plan, uh, by heart. Uh, she read it so many times, but it was a group effort, and it's something that I'm very proud of.
It is a good document.
It is a large group of people that helped with this, and so thank you to everybody that put a lot of time into this.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay. Do you feel comfortable with adding one page and the groups to approve this strategic plan for the school system?
Sure.
I do.
Yes, I think that'd be wonderful. Yes. Okay. Um, a motion regarding this wonderful document?
Move to approve.
In a second. Any further discussion? It's always great to have a plan, you know?
Well, that's how we will measure, um, if we meet our goals. And what we're planning to do is come back on an annual basis and give some type of abbreviated update with how we are doing with our, um, meeting the goals and, and completing action steps.
Wonderful. That's wonderful. We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay. Item E. This is a rare occurrence. Kind of likened to a colonoscopy, but, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna venture on. Vacancies in office. All vacancies in the membership of the Boards of Education whose members are elected pursuant to provisions of subsection A of this section by death, resignation, or other causes shall be filled by appointment by the remaining members of the Board of a person to serve until the next election of members of such Board, at which time the remaining unexpired term of the office in which the vacancy occurs shall be filled by election. You've all been provided the statute, which is very long, regarding filling vacancies. But we also have an abbreviated, um, document from the UNC School of Government, Coach Cannon. It's a wonderful resource. And, um, I need to read this before we, uh, go any further. I'm not going to read through all the options. You have it before you. But, um, as for this board and the vacancy in District Four, um, it says, uh, "For all but six of the elected Boards of Education, there are two options for the procedure to fill a vacancy, and the choice of option could make a difference in the outcome. Option A is called the motion and vote method. In an open meeting, a member may make a motion, something like this. I move that Larry Hamilton fill the vacancy of Henrietta Miller's seat. If, by the regular procedures of the council, that motion receives a majority of the affirmative votes, then Larry fills the vacancy. If it does not, then a new motion is an order." Option B, which is a longer, and I certainly would not advocate this, um, the nomination and ballot method. In an open meeting, Board members would nominate citizens to fill the vacancy. Or the Board could decide that everyone who has filled out an application is to be considered a nominee. Then each Board member would vote for the person he or she would like to have fill the vacancy. A person who receives the majority of the votes would be selected to fill the vacancy. If no one receives a majority, then those who receive the fewest votes should be dropped from consideration, so that the voting is between the front runners. In using the nomination and ballot method, the Board must decide beforehand whether a majority will be required to fill the vacancy, and if so, how the lowest vote-getters will be removed for subsequent rounds of voting if necessary. On this last point, the rules might say, for instance, that after the first round of votes, all candidates who receive zero votes would be removed. The rules might then say that after the second round, if necessary, all candidates but two will be dropped. So, the third round is between the two highest vote-getters. It is necessary to determine which method will be used before the discussion of particular candidates have begun. That being said, as a Board, we first need to consider which option we would choose if and when the applicants or a person is named to fill this vacant seat. So, um...
If I could be recognized?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I would certainly support option A, the motion and vote method. Um, I think that's the most streamlined. Um, probably it wouldn't require more than one, maybe two motions as opposed to continuous voting and, and dropping people and things like that. Um, that would be my preference. But I will say that I do, I know that we received several, uh, letters of intent, um, just prior to the deadline. And it's not a reflection on any candidate or any person that put their letter of intent forward, but I, I personally would like to have a brief interview with each candidate next week, followed by a special call meeting to put a candidate in place by the, um, uh, motion and vote method. I think that the folks, um, that did submit letters of intent, some of them I don't know, and I would be remiss in my due diligence if I didn't know more about them before placing my, um, vote for a candidate to replace the, the vacant seat. And again, it's not a reflection on anyone in the group. Um, we had a very good group of people that showed letters of interest or sent letters of interest, and that would be my preference to do, to, to be able to talk with them briefly, um, not extend this process much longer, um, before we go with the motion, um, and vote method. That would be my, my, my preference and my recommendation.
Okay, at this point, can we go ahead and decide? I would recommend that we, uh, consider the method tonight.
Okay.
Whether option A or B. So, could I?
So, in the form of a motion, I would, I would move that we would go for option A on the, the UNC School of Government's handout, which is the motion and vote method.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion regarding the option?
I'd like to comment. Uh, I've finally got to read this, but two, I actually had the concern it's on the second page. It does make it very public that we're not. I just want to make sure we're all clear. It's, makes it very public when you're not voting for someone.
Yes.
And since I kind of like the second method because of that reason. In the first method, if I propose Matt for the Board, and I'm the first person that got proposed, everybody has to just say no. And so, all of a sudden, you say no. And so, it's very public that you're, this, you're excluding me. And then you move to the next person, and then it's public each, each round. I'm not afraid of doing that, but at the same time, these are people we know, and so it's, uh, it's kind of nice when it's not done that way. And that's the comment on page two is, it, it does sort of put it in that it's not as public that you're rejecting a person.
Well, the, the way that I interpreted the, uh, ballot is, the, the ballot would be secret, but at the, at the time of the, um, appointment, whomever is appointed, those, those votes that were cast would, would be part of a public record. You see what I'm saying? So, in essence, somebody could see how we voted, which is fine. I have no problem with that. But, um, it's, it's the pleasure of the Board, but it's, but I, I, I think anything as far as, this is, these kind of situations are very rare, very rare. And early on, we only had a handful. We had two submissions. And then at the end, it's like the, it was like a ground swell of, uh, we got up to five total. Um, four, four actually met the, the requirement, and we're thankful for the submissions. But at the end of the day, we can only appoint one. And, uh, so, so I think, uh, we need to thank those who have, um, um, submitted. But at the end of the day, there's going to be some that we won't choose. And, and we just, I think we need to just do it straight up in, in the open personally, but it's the pleasure of the Board. So, we have a motion regarding option A in a second. So, all in favor of option A, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, we do have established that we will follow option A. Okay? The second item is we need to establish a time, a date in time to, uh, hold ten-minute interviews with each person who submitted, um, a letter of interest with next Tuesday at...
Chairman Odom, I'm sorry. I need to go get my calendar. I, I apologize.
Yeah. Yes.
If we do it next Tuesday, we'd be able to have a special call meeting?
We would.
To do it right after, do you think?
Yeah, that would be ample time.
Deborah, we only need forty-eight hours, right, to, to hold a special call meeting? Thank you.
Okay. Six o'clock?
Six work for everybody.
What's the date?
That date will be the nineteenth of February.
At six here?
Yes.
And, and Chairman Odom, we received six of which five, uh, were eligible for consideration.
We'll interview five.
Okay.
And if they have a scheduling conflict, I, 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 I don't see where, uh, an, an interview would, just, if they can't make it, I certainly would not say that disqualifies them because we have a letter with their resume. But we would hope to interview five.
Okay.
Ten minutes. Be prepared to, to, uh, present in ten-minute increments.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, can I clarify?
Yes.
Will, will we, um, have an established set of questions?
I honestly think that, um, you know, the main question is, you know, what is your prevailing interest and desire of seeking an appointment, uh, to this position? Certainly, uh, it's all about the students and community, but we'll let them vocalize that, so we can put a name with a face. I honestly don't, unless the Board feels compelled to draft this, this boilerplate, uh, three standard questions. Uh-uh, you know, if you would like to draft that, I think because, um, we work with the superintendent as much as anybody. So, if you have three questions you want to draft that you think are pertinent.
Okay.
Is that okay with the Board?
Sure.
But, but just to clarify, if, if this, I mean, that's short notice for five people. Um, it, anyone that's not available, that's not an exclusion.
It shouldn't preclude them at all, in my opinion, um, because, you know, by the statute, we don't even have to interview. So, it's, we're doing it as just, you know, acknowledging that, uh, you know, these people have shown an interest. And, um, you know, but it's certainly not a requirement of the statute, but if somebody has a conflict...
They could always answer the questions in writing if they absolutely couldn't be there.
Right.
Okay.
And they certainly are not wanting to serve for the per diem. I can promise you that, so.
Would it be an option if they could, uh, remote in as far as?
By phone?
Either that or, I mean.
FaceTime.
FaceTime, something of that nature. Is, is that an option if they can't be present?
As long as somebody from our technology staff will run it because we could.
They will. They will.
Yeah, don't, don't look at me to FaceTime.
Okay. Yeah, I, I would think most people would be available. It's just a short period of time.
All right. Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I believe we have reached the, um, meeting where I would ask for a motion to enter into, uh, adjourn this meeting so we may enter into closed session pursuant to General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point one-one A six.
Some more.
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Please stand and adjourn.